Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you can hear me well.
Yeah, I think we can hear you well.
Awesome, great. Sorry for the technical issue.
No worries. Is that how I say your name correctly? Can I?
Uh, Hanya is the right pronunciation.
Okay.
I totally understand that it's not the easiest name, but no worries. And thank you very much for scheduling all this and your invitation.
Of course. Um, would you mind maybe kind of just doing like a brief intro on yourself? And then I'm gonna have the others also just kind of introduce themselves and then we can get started.
Sure, sure. So um, I'm a data scientist in Canada, working with the government. And I'm very much interested to improve what I know from computer science. Uh, most of the data science knowledge that I have is self-taught. So I haven't really worked on fundamentals like basis of data structures and algorithms for a long time. Uh, but the more I'm looking for, uh, you know, more interesting opportunities, the more I see that it's important to master the fundamentals because, as you know, the coding interview is very important and critical. So yeah, I've started learning uh these things myself a few months ago. But when I saw your post and I saw that you're also interested in MIT courses, uh, I was happy to see, you know, someone that is following more or less the course that I thought maybe gonna work. And then when you shared information about the self-study group, uh, I thought it's a great idea and I'm happy that we are discussing this right now.
Awesome, awesome. All right, um, okay, so I'll pass it over to Karthik and then I guess Sadhana. And then we can pretty much go ahead and start. I know we have a lot to cover today, especially including the format. So, hey, Karthik, and welcome.
Good morning, guys. My name is Karthik. I have close to two decades of experience, but most of my experience is irrelevant because I have done mostly on consulting uh in the middleware integration space. I can dabble about writing code in different languages. Haven't worked too deep um using any algorithms to build any product of sorts. So um, and I'm not a computer science major either. I'm a lot of science. So um, everything, these data structures, algorithms are all practical, experiential based usage that I have done over time. So I'm trying to get to the roots so that I can crack some interviews because invariably you have to write coding interviews. So here I am.
Awesome. And then let's go on to Sadhana.
Hi, all. Uh, this is Sadhana here. I'm based out of India. So uh, okay, I'm also an electronics engineer, but yeah, I've been in this background for quite some time. But truly speaking, right, though, what what exactly we do in our day-to-day work is so much different from what is being asked in interviews or brushing up the basics is so very important. So that's one reason why I'm here, okay?
Okay, all right. Um, well, thank you. Thank you to everyone, Sadhana, Karthik, Hanya. Um, so all good backgrounds, myself, uh, you know, I've been doing this, you know, just um, I'm a self-taught like web developer. I did actually start off trying to do a CS major, but then like I changed my major to business. Um, and then, you know, for a few years I worked in marketing and then I kind of wanted to get back into computer science. But then I realized like over here in the States, in the US, it's kind of harder to go back and get another degree. Um, so like, once you finish a degree, you're kind of locked in. So I've been just kind of taking courses on my own, um, you know, and like shadowing courses. And then, of course, if I moved all of that experience into becoming an actual web developer and then like more or less, uh, when I joined Beachbody last year, I decided to change my title to software engineer because that was the role that they were looking for. And so um, engineering requires a lot more thought than just kind of like changing a few colors and, you know, like changing some HTML around or some JavaScript. It's uh, it's more of the whole system design of, you know, the entire application you're gonna build. And um, you know, the data structures that you choose largely impact the way that the application is gonna work. So it's a fascinating topic. Um, I was thinking about, you know, how do I like make myself even more, um, you know, better as a software engineer? Like, do I need to brush up on math? Do I need to brush up on data structures? Um, and so I chose this as kind of like a goal, right? Like I thought, you know, um, I hear so much about like this Fang, you know, or um, Mang or whatever you want to call it, interview, right? Where they ask a ton of questions. Uh, Karthik mentioned to me something called the Blind 75. Um, are you all familiar with it? And I guess like you can kind of like just say, yeah, or in the chat or whatever.
Yes, and I've started that as well.
Okay, so um, it's kind of like a simple um version of, you know, doing lead code where you just kind of finish like the main questions here. Array, binary, dynamic graph, uh, direct programming graph, interval, link list, matrix, all of this stuff. Um, if you get through these 75 questions, most people kind of agree that these are the ones that you're probably gonna get asked the most, um, if you were to try to go to Fang. So, you know, I was kind of thinking we could make like a study group around that, you know, and maybe just kind of like attack some of these questions. Um, the benefit is that like, you know, if we all work at this for six months, then um, you know, we probably can know how to do most of these questions. And my goal is like, um, like I told you, I want to be a better software engineer. So I definitely want to go beyond the scope of 75. Um, I wanna like, you know, try to attempt as many as I can, um, you know, during the six-month period. So that way, like, out of that six-month period, I feel like I have a very, very strong data structures and algorithms background. And maybe I can pick up other things too, like along the way, like math and um, you know, just like better system design, which is the other study group that we're doing. Um, but yeah, that's my focus. Uh, this is the format for the group. Um, so some people have kind of like spoken to me on the side about the format of the group and I want to get that out of the way. So um, you know, like I, I've been saying here for the most part and in chats that what I expect, you know, like myself to do at least, you know, and um, you know, this is kind of like, I just wrote this for anybody else who wants to study in the same rigorous way. Um, I, I kind of expect everybody to just like do their best at, you know, studying on their own. Um, and the purpose of this group is not to make more meetings and more people like annoyed with like having to meet up all the time. Uh, that's definitely not the case. Like, I don't want people to have to like show up every day if they don't want to. Um, what I did want to do is just encourage a community, one more study group where people can join in. And I almost kind of feel like optionally um for any of these review sessions. Um, like what would count as today, right? Like this morning, this is kind of like a review session. Um, and you know, there are 30 minutes to an hour. Um, you know, with 30 minutes, just kind of giving enough people time to like jump out if they need to. So if you're on this call today and you have to go do something else, like you have to pick up, uh, you have to drop off your kids or you have to go, you know, make some coffee or you have to, you know, do something to your hair, totally fine. Don't need to tell me, just like drop. Um, it's totally okay. I understand it. I'm a parent myself. I have two kids. Um, I understand how these things work. Uh, but that said, you know, like try to like, you know, show up if you can, right? If you don't have a, you know, an excuse, um, then just see if you can come because it'll help. Like, it'll help remember all of this daily self-studying that you're doing too, right? Like, the more you study, the more you're gonna want to review. That's how I almost kind of feel it. Um, it's gonna go. And then what I did want to say that um, might, that should be up uh required like for everybody is just, you know, um, one day in the week, right? Where we practice um some kind of mock interview session. And I think the reason I wanted to keep that sort of required is because um it holds you accountable, right? Um, if we say that the, you know, goal is uh six months off, right? Here we are in May. Um, then May, June, July, August, September, October, November, right? Uh, these are five months here. This is one more month here. So like by the time you hit November, I want like everybody, including myself here, to just be able to like go to any, you know, Fang interview, technical round and just be able to be um, you know, comfortable with it. I don't expect you to pass with flying colors, but I do expect you to like have like a good time, right? And, you know, if you want to pass it with flying colors, then it's gonna take a lot more effort, I think, you know. Um, but that's kind of like the, the purpose of this goal, right? Like just to really, really grind as much as we can towards that. So um, I'm open to any suggestions, uh, maybe like hearing your thoughts as well.
Uh, so the question that I have is regarding, you know, I know that we're just starting this, but uh, I think as we are moving forward, we might want to have more uh detailed plans for every week at least to understand, for instance, which topics we're gonna cover.
Yeah, so basically, um, I was thinking like this is kind of like the month-to-month format and uh, I could definitely hammer out, you know, like some of the notes per week. Um, but what I was thinking was that, so this week, right? This first week that we're going through, um, you know, and I can just kind of pull it up here on the calendar. Um, you know, I almost expect that, you know, we'll be kind of just going through review, right? So things like what is Big O notation? Um, you know, just what are these um different types of data structures? Um, you know, getting any kind of language constructs out of the way. Um, and then I would almost say like our mock interview session probably for this week would be just like implementing one of the data structures chosen. So um, maybe like if I said, could you build an array, right? Would you be able to build an array in your favorite um language, right? Something that mimicked an array-like structure where it had, you know, um access, search, insertion, or maybe a link list if that makes more sense, right? Like I might say, could you implement a link list? Um, and then I think, you know, towards the end of the week, we could probably start, you know, doing some of these together. Um, I, if you're all like, oh, I want to start right now, that's totally acceptable too. Um, I think that we could, you know, start to attempt some of this midweek. Um, it just depends on like, you know, the, the um, the tenacity and the, the passion of the group. Um, but that said, you know, um, I think like we just uh want to get like the basic stuff out of the way, right? And then um, use this month as much as possible to really just kind of hammer through a lot of these different sections. So each topic here itself, right? You know, could be just, like, we could just spend like a few weeks on just doing these problems, right? And then go to the next, which would be a link list, you know, and do these problems. And then uh, each review session, we just kind of discuss it. So the way I would, I would almost imagine it, like, let's say today, right? Like, the end of today's session, I'd say to everybody here, go attempt, you know, two some. And then, you know, just kind of be ready to discuss it tomorrow, right? Um, you know, and then we can go on to best time to buy and sell stock. Then let's go ahead and try to discuss it, you know, again, uh, either tomorrow or the day after. And then we'll just um, we'll just keep kind of going, right? You know, like as we go through this and if anybody has questions again about the problem or like any of the syntax or, you know, some of these technical terms, um, I think we kind of cover it, um, you know, in these sessions here. So what do you think? Does that sound like a good plan?
Uh, I think it does. Um, for instance, if you're focused on arrays for this week, uh, I think gaining, you know, deep knowledge on arrays, it can also take a long time because I can see for the first month, we have included arrays in this tax queues. I'm not sure honestly if it can cover all the during one week uh in depth.
Sure.
Uh, but uh, probably, as you suggest, that looking at that 75 list and then moving forward uh can help us for those weekly plans. For instance, let's start with arrays and then work on maybe just three, four of these questions every day to see if we can cover arrays for this week. And of course, there's some fundamental things, as you mentioned, like Big O notation and uh some uh other aspects like language constructs. I don't, I haven't looked into the references you've suggested for that, but some of those are necessary anyway for uh, you know, reviewing data structures and algorithms.
Hmm. Okay. Um, Karthik, I know you talked to me on the side. Uh, did you have anything you wanted to add or Sadhana? And you might be muted, so just double check.
Yeah, sorry, it just goes on different. Yeah, it, it makes sense. Like, um, I don't know, it depends. I think probably we will cruise um a problem in arrays and hashing as it gets a little the complexity from easy, medium, hard. It might even take sometimes like, you know, a problem three days. It totally depends. Um, that's why I was thinking, Vijay, if we can add some kind of online thing, uh, reference document of some sort uh where we can solve it and add the justification. Let's say, start, always start with brute force. The reason why you say that, like, um, when you go to lead code, always it just gives like some probably efficient ones. Let's tackle um brute force. Because in an interview, sometimes like um, the engineers there, whoever is interviewing, they're like, okay, just do brute force for me, right? And then they change it. Okay. Uh, how about like, you know, uh, you can have some space complexity, but I want the runtime, like, you know, time complexity brought down. So they threw a curve ball. So those kinds of situations. So I wa- I was thinking maybe a brute force and, and what is the most efficient um using space and time complexity? So different variations when you do, uh, sometimes it might even take more than a day. Um, that, that's my thought. Um, and as, go along, as we go along, like, you know, we'll get a little more familiar, at least for me, a little more familiar. Maybe I'll be able to uh do these things a little faster, so.
Definitely. Um, I see, Hanya, you asked a question here. And definitely tell me if I'm saying your name right or wrong. I, I might still be saying it wrong. Oh.
No worries. Uh, yeah, I was also uh aligned with uh Karthik's question. I think uh that's very relevant to start also having some documentation or some collaboration platform to start sharing things and sharing ideas if possible. I don't know what's the best way of doing it to avoid over documentation and having a very messy wiki-style environment. But uh, yeah, I think it would be great to think about that as well because I had some other links, for instance, to share with you or the team regarding Big O analysis if someone wants to get deeper, for instance, they could take a look at those links and so on.
Yeah, um, so I, I basically encourage um everybody here. Like, the way we do it in the other study group is to just um keep a notion. So that's what I, what I say when I say notion is this is, it's a software. It's like a online, you know, um notebook. That's the way I call it, right? And I just like stuff as much stuff as I can into my notion. It's always like unorganized. I mean, if you were to look at like what I have for like all these different topics, like DSA, I just have like tons and tons of like notes, right? That I just kind of like throw together. Um, you know, like so here, this is the one that I share with people. And over time, like I, I kind of just organize it, right? Like, this one is on the topics of data structure and algorithms itself, like what is time complexity? You know, like what is the study group? Who are some great teachers I like? Um, the, the data structures, arrays, link list, the notes that I've made. Um, you know, then like I have other pages. Um, you know, some of these are not like as well organized, but I always kind of treat that as like, that's okay to me because like I'm not, I'm not trying to impress anybody with my notes. I'm just trying to keep the notes in my um, in some kind of fashion and outside of my own head, right? Because I don't want to keep all the notes in my head. That's impossible to remember. Um, sometimes I have code samples, you know, and I just kind of keep that around. So if I'm ever like, oh yeah, what was a pointer again? And what is dereferencing or something like that? I can just kind of like go and see a quick example and that usually helps me. Um, you know, I've got a buddy, his name is Sam. He does a lot of like flashcards and um, uh, trying to remember like where he kept it, but it might be on. Um, there's like a flashcard maker, I think, that he uses. And uh, he just kind of like was showing me it and uh, you can like link to like different flashcards that you make. And so like, that's how he remembers stuff. Um, you know, and then what I was trying to kind of, oh, here it is, Quizlet. Okay, I found it. So Quizlet, it's pretty cool, you know, like he uses it for like remembering things like in React, which is a programming language, you know, or not for, a framework we use for like making websites. So it's kind of like nice for remembering different things. Um, there's like 300 questions that we're going through in there. Um, and the one thing that I kind of encourage a lot of people to use is GitHub. Uh, GitHub is a.
I was gonna say that, Vijay. I second that. Um, perhaps create a GitHub repo and ask, let's say, each problem that we are not solved, we can use our first name as the method signature, right? Let's say Vijay and then whatever, uh, the last camera case. If, if it's Java, I'm, I'm inclined more towards Java. I don't know. Uh, Hane and Sadhana, uh, if you guys are on Java, Sadhana for sure. Are you on .NET? Uh, C sharp?
Okay. Okay, mine is a very mixed one, so, but I prefer to write code in C++ at least for interviews because that's.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, if, if we are overriding on Java, we can write it on the same um class with the naming convention, some kind of a uh.
Yeah, actually, we can have a GitHub repo, I was thinking, where we can submit our code. I mean, we can check in our code. Maybe you guys can write it on Java and I'll, I'll write it on C++ and put it in the repo.
Yeah. I don't know, Hane, which language you are, your preferences, but um, yeah.
She said Python.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, no problem. Oh, yeah. Uh, so that way, like if, even if we are writing on the same language, uh, we can write with different uh namings on the method signature. Uh, try a brute force or whatever, right? Like, uh, the ideas, um, I think more than solving the real problem, it'll be great if we can solve. The idea is how to approach is the first um way to go about it, if, if I will. Once we, the approach, uh, if we understand the approach better for those lead 75, I think like, you know, we are pretty much set for the algorithm coding interviews, but uh with a twist, right? It's not gonna be the, oh, uh, there is an array. There's always gonna be behavioral induced in it from what, what I know, right? Okay, there are, okay, there are like 10 cities, find the least path. Basically, let's say if they're traveling to the graph and stuff, so they're gonna throw behavioral into it, which we'll have to prepare, you know, understand and like then we can debate more on it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Um, I think that this is a good, like, target to kind of like work towards um for, for these interviews and, you know, just kind of be um prepared. I would say though, this is kind of like the minimum effort, you know, and so take it with a grain of salt. I'm pretty sure that, you know, like, everybody who, you know, is already in Fang or the interviewers who are in Fang probably are aware of this page. Um, so they probably may ask some of the questions from this list, but you know, like they may also kind of drill a little bit harder, like if they, if they want to just kind of find out, like how much do you really know? So um, I feel like if we're comfortable with this, then we can kind of like graduate to a little bit higher level and try to like attempt some more of those questions. Um, but again, that's all in time, right? Like, I don't want to stress anybody out. That's not the point of this. I'm not trying to stress you out. It is very relaxed. Um, again, I'm gonna emphasize like optional, um, but, you know, uh, optional to a degree that like you control, right? Like you want to like, you know, it, you're gonna get what you put into it. And so I want you to, you know, bring your best effort if you can. Going back to GitHub, I think we can support different languages, totally fine. Um, myself, um, I'm already familiar with uh, you know, all the languages mentioned. So like I can do C++, I can do Java, Python and JavaScript. Those are like the languages that I know. Um, I think that, you know, if we want to just um review each other's work, you know, and somebody writes in one language, it would be probably good practice to just look at it together um if you don't understand it and just kind of get a sense and see if you can um try like, you know, getting the gist of it, right? And um, maybe there might be, maybe if you understand the gist, then maybe you could write like the Pythonic solution for it if you're on a, if you're not a Java person. And if you're the opposite way, right? Like you write in um, you know, C++ and somebody writes in the Python, you might want to try writing Python, you know, way of doing it or vice versa, right? So um, and then the other thing too is that, you know, I know that um, you know, we're going after the blind 75. But if you, you know, really are struggling with some of these questions, there is a solution, right? And there is a submission, right? And you can kind of go and see what other people have said. You can see what accepted looks like. Um, there are solutions out there. I encourage you to at least read them if you're struggling a lot. Um, so that way you kind of build like that, that mental muscle, like, okay, this is how like stuff, you know, gets answered. If, because like if you, if you just sit there and like only like struggle with the problem, but you never read the solution or anything like that, or you never find a solution, I don't think that's a good use of your time. Um, you need to be able to see the solutions that other people have put out there, uh, understand those solutions and then try to work towards that solution yourself. And then over time, right? Like, these things are gonna start making more sense to where like, okay, maybe you couldn't do like the first few, no problem. But like, if you practice those first few that you were struggling with, um, then later on, like as you attempt others, you'll probably find some patterns and be able to solve the new ones without having to read the solution. So that's kind of like the way I think we should do this. Um, just looking at the chat here. So suggest neat code. Is that a thing? Ever heard of Neat Code?
Yeah, I think uh, the Neat Code owner used to prepare himself for an interview and then uh, I think he got a job eventually with Google, but he has prepared a nice, yeah, a nice list of uh solutions and he is providing explanations. It's not always the best and fastest solution, uh, I must say, because there are many other people that are providing uh solutions to every single problem. If you search uh each problem on YouTube, there are so many solutions and some of them in some cases are much better than Neat Code. Um, but yeah, I think uh, it's quite interesting. It provides also on a structure and uh, he has also 150 less if we want to go beyond 75. Maybe we want to do that as well.
That's awesome. Actually, uh, Vijay, I was gonna suggest this, uh, to tackle this by category. Uh, I looked up Neat Code as well uh last week, but I was gonna suggest as we start, like maybe we'll tackle it by categories uh here. And it has the blind 75 and 150, although I have a stretch goal of going to 150, but I, I'm okay trying to do 75. Um, first pass, I think uh, if, uh, if we go through this and first pass, we can do uh whatever way that works. And then I'm, I'm sure depending on what leveling we're gonna apply for the job, right? Uh, we might have to reinforce with like better performing thing or alternative ways. So that would be, I'm, I'm assuming for everybody, uh, depending on what, because I'm gonna probably apply it at a minimum at L6, right? I'm not gonna apply anything lower than L6, so, um, so. I understand what's here, but you know, just for the sake of uh this whole thing going in the same way, maybe we should start just like everybody together and then each one will optimize for their own uh thing even further and we can share it on GitHub, okay?
Yeah, sounds good. Um, so what I was gonna ask here is some more like just basic stuff for the um things here, the people here. Um, just to kind of get it out of the way, like how, how comfortable here does everybody feel with like uh using GitHub? Can everybody here make a pull request or like a, you know, like, you know, push some code up to GitHub, right? To a, a similar repo. If I made a repo right now, which I'll do, right? Data structures and algorithms. And I'll just make it a public repo, right? So anybody can contribute. Right? So anybody can contribute. Um. Here's the repo, right? So um the first thing you'd probably want to do is just clone this repo. So I'll go ahead and just start right now, like putting it together.
I'm assuming everybody should be able to do good, right? At a minimum. Um, that's only a restore code anywhere.
Okay, I think we're finally all together, so let's go ahead. There we go. So a little bit of a pain, um, but we've got the repo there, so initial commit. I'm gonna just follow these instructions here. So essentially, um, we're gonna add this remote. And get push. And I probably need to get checked out, man. So, yeah. All right, there we go. Little bit of a um you know, tedious thing, but like it's done. So all you have to do is go to this public repo, right? And then like for this week, let's go ahead and, you know, just get familiar with GitHub. Um, it may take like a few, like if you're not familiar with it, you might want to like spend some time just kind of like looking at like tutorials. I mean, I'm here to help as well, but like the goal should just be like make a pull request to just update this, read me with your notes from this week. Um, essentially, yeah, like that's how I kind of think that it should go like, you know, like you create like your file. Um, you know, and then you just, you send it up to us like via um, you know, a pull request. Um, and then you check out a branch, right? You say DSA, um, then we saw DJ solution. Uh, get commit. Push origin. My branch name. So then what'll happen is, yeah, see, there you go. It'll show like, okay, this branch just came up, can compare and pull request it. Then I'll just put it like here, um, like just so everybody knows, this is the two someone that I just worked on. And so then what will happen is I create this pull request. Um, then people can kind of see it over here on the side, right? And they can go, oh, okay, Vijay did this. And here's his code. And then they can kind of look at it and they can see, oh, here's his work for to some Java. Does that make sense? I guess like here's the repo, here's a pull request. If we want to like merge it in later, we can. And you know, we just kind of keep going. Everybody kind of like works on their solution under a certain folder. If you create a new folder, um, then it would be to a new particular solution. And we just kind of like manage the repo as it starts to grow. Any questions on that?
I just want to say I don't have any questions. I think uh, that makes sense. We can start with yes, and also, you know, read me files and pull requests for kind of collaboration.
Okay, all right, good. Um. I I just see Shelby join. Um, I apologize to you, Shelby. Um, I think that you may have been struggling with the Zoom link for a while. Um, so, but that said, I can kind of recap here if you want, um, just so that we can kind of all be on the same page. Um, do you mind just like really quickly like telling everybody who you are? Because I wanted you to join the group as well. If you're not muted and you have a mic, if not, no worries. Sending him a quick message. Um, whenever he gets to uh, his mic and all that, we can hear him talk, but um. So yeah, basically, I'll just recap again one more time, so we're kind of aware of what we're doing. Um, so, so basically, um we're gonna be following this schedule here, and this is kind of going to be our focus. Um, I think tomorrow we'll go over big O notation. Um, although I think we can probably do it in the last few minutes if everyone's comfortable with that. Um, I think language, for now, I'm gonna say use the language that you feel most comfortable with. Um, you know, and I think we can take a vote as well. We can probably do that. Um. So there's a Discord that I have everybody, you know, like work with. Um, I know some people use WeChat too, but I think it'd be great if we just kind of like focused our efforts in this channel, DS algorithms. I'll just put a link to that here. Um, so the link will be in this Zoom chat. I'm gonna copy it. Just make sure you can see the channel. Um. I put it in the chat right now. Make sure you can get there. Um, then just, you know, like any questions you have, just, you know, um you know, go here, but I'll say, um, what common language? And then I see your question, Hanya, like should we use recursion in the first month? Definitely. I think we can, um, we can work on recursion this first month too. Um, choice A would be Python, choice B would be Java, choice C would be JavaScript. Choice D, um, whatever else, C plus plus. The other. Okay, so take a vote in there and see if you are, um let's see how we do tomorrow for like who, um, what language is the most popular for this? And then if everybody agrees like on a certain language, um, then we'll go ahead and use that one as our common one for writing. Um, but that said, don't feel like, you know, like you have to be only in one language, feel whatever, uh, feel whatever ma- makes the most sense for you. And the others here can help translate the idea, especially if you write the pseudo code at the top. And I kind of encourage that as well. If you're gonna write, um, use a little bit of comments, not a whole lot. I would say focus on writing, um, you know, code that reads well. So when you write the code, it should feel like you're looking at the code and you don't need a whole bunch of comments to understand, because the naming and the way the the functions are written are are good enough to get a basic sense of what's going on. But at the top, you can kind of use the same structure as the way that lead code does. Um, you know, and I've seen their stuff sometimes, right? Like, um, there are some, like if you click on them that have a solution. And so like they usually kind of keep like, um, let me see if I change this over here to JavaScript. So yeah, like I would say, you know, if you're working in JavaScript or something like that, use doc types, which tells you like what parameters the function's gonna use and the type that you're gonna expect to be returned. Um, and then maybe just some description there. Um, and then we did discuss making a pull request. So the way you do it is you just clone this repo, then you know, you just um make a new folder for the problem that you're gonna solve and then write the solution. And then submit the pull requests as I've demonstrated here. This video is recorded, so you can watch the good parts of this video um, speed through the rest and just kind of like look at how to make a pull request again, if you see this last part here. Um, and then, uh, I think as far as like just making sure that you can keep up. Um, you know, just keep a notion on the side. Um, we can all kind of share our notes here in the read me or links to our notions here. That probably is a good idea. Um, and then just discuss like those things. Uh, tomorrow, we'll probably go over big no notation. Then I will say Wednesdays and Fridays are different um, for this group. That's the system design. So I think at minimum, you probably only need to show up Monday, Tuesday and um, Thursday. Um, but if you did want to like study every day, then you could probably study with us after that group on uh Wednesday and Friday. Maybe I'll open it up for an extra thirty minutes to talk about data structures and algorithms. But yeah, so Monday, Tuesday, and then Friday, I mean Thursday. Um, and then one day out of the week that we need to still kind of agree on, like for the interview sessions. Um, so I've said, you know, Friday. Um, but then I think people were originally kind of like saying, oh, that might be too early for us, um, especially with Indian standard time. So I was thinking that, um, if the hour is too early, because I put four PM on Friday. Uh, then what we could do is we could try to like make it a little bit later. But if it's a little bit later, then I prefer not to do a Friday, because I know some people here on the West Coast um, like to have their Friday nights. So I think maybe, you know, we could do it like another day out of the week, where it's more like um, a six PM to eight PM thing. And that's what I usually do with the group itself for meetups. You know, we have meetups like from six PM to eight PM. So I think we could have a mock interview session one of the other days. So I'd probably put that on a Thursday. Is that something that everybody here is okay with?
Yeah, actually, uh, it's too very early for me. It's like Saturday morning, four thirty is day two early for me, thank you speaking.
Okay, um, what time would you say works well for you? Like, um.
At least six AM should be okay. Um, but four thirty seems to be way too early for me to get up and start giving some mock interview for sure.
Okay, I'm gonna use this to help me like understand what the time is. So if I say um, you know, we want to do something around six thirty on PST, that's eight AM for you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay. Um, we can even do seven thirty, that would be nine AM. Is that okay?
It's okay, yeah. But it was like four thirty AM was like way too much. I just saw that and I was like, oh my god.
Okay, so we'll, uh, how does everybody else here feel with that? Like we can plan, um, Hanya, are you, you're in Canada, right? So you're on the West Coast with me, right? Okay.
Uh, I'm on, you know, uh, East Coast, so.
East Coast, okay.
Yeah, three hours ahead of you guys, yeah.
Okay, so you're on the opposite side of Canada. Okay, so um if we, yeah, that might be kind of late for you. Um. Here's the other thing. I think like if this is becoming very difficult for everybody to meet, like for a mock interview, we can. we can split this up, right? And I think people can take ownership of it. So, um, you know, if you, you're like, oh, I just can't meet these, make these meets. Um, you know, you can find me. I, I like studying a lot, so I'm happy to like organize another like session in a different time zone. And that can be for people who want to like meet like more towards like a traditional time zone, um, you know, East Coast, West Coast. Um, but then like, you know, if you want to just kind of be on a full group one, then I think we can probably do like, um, something more West Coast IST based. So, um, I'm open to, to like flexibility. And if I can't meet, then just feel free to schedule with some of the people here, just um, pull some people from, you know, the, the repo and say, hey, you know, um, definitely love to, to do a mock session with you. Um, I think, I think like I can do, I won't have any other time during the day because I actually have to work like during these hours. Um, I could probably try like a Saturday, like if that works or a Sunday. Um, but usually like on the weekends, sometimes like I kind of am not available because of family stuff. And I try not to make people work on the weekends anyway. So, um, we just maybe like, we can kind of start. I think like maybe the best thing could be like start, um, closer to five, then kind of drag it to like maybe eight or so. So some people can kind of do like the beginning. Some people can do the end. Would that work?
Yes, for me.
Okay. All right. And I think like that may probably be the solution here. Like we have, well, you know, like we start a little bit earlier. So it could start around four, um, and that could be for whoever wants to start it at four. And then like the newer team can come in later towards the night and then do their two hours. So two hours here, two hours here. Um, I'll probably just pick one or the other, like as I go through my own, because I don't want to be on the call for four hours and people can drop as they will need, you know, I think that, that should work probably just fine. Okay. Um, so I'll go ahead and schedule this. I think like I'll go ahead and schedule this for Thursday. So I'll create like a little calendar here and we can prepare for our first mock interview. Um, during this time now, right? Like, so you kind of have like a basic outline here. I would just go ahead and, um, again, kind of get a sense of like the basic stuff. So go through this sheet that I've shared. I'll share it one more time in the chat. Um, and I'll just kind of talk about like study places that you can go to like check out the stuff on your own. Um, but like, here's the link for the, the study group, you know, um, the stuff that we're going to go over. So the first thing to do is just make sure you understand big O know it, big O notation. Um, and then you're familiar with the language that you're going to be using. Um, you know, please vote here and let us know like what you prefer. Then, um, go ahead and review a data structure, right? You can start with arrays. And then maybe work your way up to link lists. If you want to look at some of these other algorithms, try that, try to understand at least for this week, the basic four. Um, you know, methods that go for most data structures, want to be able to access that, uh, like a record or a key or value or something, right? Uh, with any data structure, um, access an entry, search for an entry, insert an entry, delete an entry. Um, and then maybe sort the data structure. So those are like the methods you're always probably going to have like with any kind of data structure. And then you want to know like, what is the time for that? For each of these methods? And then what is the space complexity? Uh, and we can go over this in more detail tomorrow. Um, and then like as far as like resources to go to, I think like the best one for now, like is probably like some of the links I put here in this other, um, this others. So I'm going to put that one over here. So, uh, big O cheat sheets, kind of like your, your go-to guide for, um, understanding like, like, oh, complexity for time and space. So go here whenever you're kind of like, you're not sure. I actually have this on my wall. I have a picture of this and I was showing Karthik, like I have a poster that I got from their Redbubble. So you can get this if you want. Uh, I'm not like, I don't make any money off this, but I was just kind of like saying this is kind of helpful. So you can put this on your wall if you ever want to look at it. Um, and it's kind of helpful. Um, then what he talks about here is are these books coding, tracking the coding interview, introduction to algorithms. Any of those books are fine. Um, I kind of feel like for me, books don't really help as much, um, because they are so time consumptive to read. So I like kind of going through courses. So, um, I wouldn't start with MITs because MITs can get very difficult fast, but start with maybe like something simple. I found this guy, um, Abdul Bari, who tends to do a pretty good job of like explaining algorithms. So you could probably go to his channel and check it out, or, um, you know, you could look up a U Demy course. Um, I think U Demy is pretty good in that, like, you know, you can like they usually have like pretty cheap deals on like things. Um, so you can kind of go in and, you know, just find like a good data structures and algorithms course. Um, you know, I think like, uh, for the most part, like there's a couple that like I've looked at so far. And if I can get this thing to open, I can show it to you. If not, then we'll, uh, and bring it up like next time. Um, but yeah, so, um, so, all right. So that's the link. So I have this same thing by the guy Abdul Bari, but I think that this course may be too long. Um, it's like 50 hours. So like what I did recommend, and I put a list here together instead was, um, there was a course that was a little bit simpler. Um, and it was like very short, but I got a lot of value out of it. Um, it was this one by this guy, Scott Barrett. Um, so he does it in three languages. He does it in, um, a Python, then he also does it in Java and he does it in JavaScript. So I just got all three. Um, so, uh, look up Scott Barrett. Seems like he's, um, he's got some good stuff, you know? Um, they're pretty short and there's visuals. That's kind of like why I like the course. Then from there, I feel like you can kind of go and like deep dive with somebody else, like an Abdul. Or, um, there was another person I think called Tim Buchbuch Chaka. This course was pretty good. So these are the courses I'd recommend, um, if you're going to start this journey. And then use like these other things like Geeks for Geeks, MIT, um, the CLRS, right? Like that's the main book that you know, all thing people will point to, right? Say, oh, read CLRS, which basically is, um, this one, Introduction to Algorithms by Corman Thomas Leeserson and, um, forgot the other person's name, but, um, Clifford, is that what that says here? Um, so essentially like I have this book on my Kindle, probably can't open it here in this read thing, but uh, that's CLRS. That's what this stands for. So this is like their main book. Then, uh, this one by Robert Sedgwick is also pretty good. Robert Sedgwick is the guy who, um, contributed a ton of stuff to, um, Oracle Java. So anything by him is really good as well. So, um, and that should give you like a really, really strong fundamentals background in terms of like everything, data structures and algorithms. Plus you have like the good, like, you know, fast reference, like geeks for geeks, if you're going to look for things. So, um, yeah, that's, that's basically all I wanted to like say for today. Um, is that a pretty good, um, helpful guide for getting started? Does everybody here feel comfortable?
I think it's a good start. Thank you.
Okay. Well, perfect. Um, then the next step here really is just get started. Um, you know, just start, um, studying. Uh, it's together. Uh, you don't, so one last thing I'll put out here is even though like I know I've said, okay, study a lot on your own outside of the group and I'll meet with us a little bit optionally, like during these other days. Um, I want people here to also kind of realize like you can definitely reach out, like any, any day of the week, just like put it some stuff in this chat or you know, just, um, DM me directly. I talked to a lot of people online anyway. Or DM, you know, like a group of people together and just say, hey, I'm having like a difficult time understanding this. Would any be up for a call or like, you know, something to chat? Um, and if I have the time or somebody has the time, definitely I encourage like just talking about it together and pair programming on it because you shouldn't feel like you're alone or you have like no one to help. Um, and this course should not go by like super fast or like the study session should not go by like, and you should feel like, well, I, I did six months with them, but like I didn't get anything out of it because I was too confused the entire time. I, I almost feel like, if you feel like I way speak up early and let's try to like talk about it together. Because if you, my whole thing is like, if if I can explain it to somebody else, right? In a simple way, then that's how I know like I've mastered that subject. But if I can't explain it, then I don't know it yet. So that's how I grade myself, right? So even if I'm sitting here solving like a whole bunch of DSA stuff, um, if I can't explain it to anybody, right? Like somebody else who might be having trouble, then I don't think I know it. So that's kind of how I like, um, encourage others to work together as well, right? Get the most value out of this as you can. And, um, yeah, just ask for help as much as you can early. All right. Um, so go ahead and start, um, looking at this stuff here, um, that I've mentioned already, they go language, data structures, the poll, the GitHub and the Notion. And then I'll see you tomorrow. And if I don't see you tomorrow, then I should see you Thursday. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Of course. All right. See you all. Bye, bye.